Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the LWV members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse nor support political parties nor candidates. The LWV does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring this forum this evening, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to candidates, but again, does not provide an endorsement of any kind. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening. Tonight, we are here for the three wards of the Brooklyn Park City Council. In tonight's forum, the candidates will start out with six of the seven questions they received in advance, at which they have a minute to respond. Then our candidates will have up to, I'm going to change it to 45 seconds, for the questions that have been coming in from the audience that we've been collecting via email. Finally, will be given one minute for your final question, that is your final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request that you refrain from making any personal attack on your fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience this forum nor any others we are or have been conducting. We have been posting email addresses to which questions may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions may be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. Our screeners are here to make sure the questions are relevant to all the candidates in this forum and are, again, are not in any way a personal attack towards any of our candidates. Candidates, I'd like to invite you to take a look at our timekeepers at the table there. They will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements and then show you that your time has expired. Please finish your statement at that time, as I'll be directing the next speaker's turn. All right, before we start, let's introduce our candidates. For the West District, we have Henry Momanyi and Susan Pa. For the Central District, we have Christian Erickson and Boyd Morrison, who may be lost in traffic or stuck there, who knows? But when he joins us, we'll let him speak. Is he here? Yay! Do you see him? Okay, good. Boyd is here, yay! And then we have, from the East District, we have Lisa Jacobson and Benjamin Oseminum.
That was pretty good.
My name is Kirsten Chomi. I told you I have a hard one. All right, let's get going, and we'll get Boyd settled in in just a moment. First question was, please tell us about your background and previous city involvement that support your candidacy for this position. We will start with Mr. Henry Momanyi. Push the button, don't forget.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Henry Momanyi, originally from Kenya. I am a resident of Brooklyn Park West District, married to three kids, 15, 12, and four. My background is in business administration, and I'm an executive director of Robo Health Services. In 2016, I was the co-chair of Accountable Communities for Health, a project which was being conducted by Enbun County and Brooklyn Park. So, my background, as I said, is in business administration, and I have some professional certifications in mental health, first aid, community outreach, and identification, and advanced childhood experiences. This has been going for the last 15 to 17 years in the community, our large forum of experience, and that's why I am learning to be a council member from the West District of Brooklyn Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Pa.
First, I want to thank the League of Minnesota, the League of, I'm sorry, the League of Women Voters, for this forum. I'm Susan Pa, and I am the current council member. I've been serving the last four years as a council member here in Brooklyn Park. I've been active in Brooklyn Park for over 14 years, volunteering and being a part of this community. I'll kind of go over my list here, so make sure I don't forget anything, but currently right now, I'm on the Brooklyn Park Economic Development Authority, in service of Vice President. I'm also on the Board of the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, and I am the council liaison to the Community Long Range Improvement Commission in the Brooklyn Youth Council. I was previously the city council liaison to the Planning Commission, the Human Rights Commission, and the Reckon Park Advisory Commission. One thing I really love is volunteering in our community and working with our youth, so I do that a lot. And I volunteer over at Park Center High School as well with the youth there. I've been actively engaged in our Brooklyn Park community, and I plan to continue to do that.
Thank you. From the Central District, Mr. Christian Erickson.
I'm Christian Erickson, running in the Central District. I am a lifelong resident of Brooklyn Park. I have the investment of four generations of history in this community. Professionally, I've spent most of my career planning events and developing programs that bring diverse groups of stakeholders together for a common goal. I've done well in this work because I'm a flexible, respectful-of-and-careful listener to those I both agree with and disagree with, and can think creatively to propose alternatives to the obvious. In the city, I've served on the Human Rights Commission for almost four years. For two of those years, I was the chair. Feel good about the work we did, and during the two years as chair, steered the commission from a period of really high turnover to the stable and highly engaged group we have today, working on the Human Rights Commission Work Plan. I've also earned endorsements from several sitting council members and the mayor. I think that there's many who share my belief that I'm well-qualified to take on this role. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Boyd Morrison. Can you turn your mic on?
Testing.
Yeah.
I am Boyd Morrison, and I'm running for Central District City Council. I'm running, I'm from Detroit, Michigan, a city that's 20 times larger than Brooklyn Park, bringing some experience from the city of Detroit. That served as policy, personnel, procedures, and budget commissions with the city of Detroit. I'm bringing some of their lifelong experiences to the city of Brooklyn Park. I'm a U.S. Navy Honorary Discharge Veteran, have stepped up to serve you, your family, and this country. Trained and prepared for moments of civil unrest, controversies, and challenges. And as we know, that's when the bold, the brave, and the courageous step up to defend our country and the people that's in it. With that same training, I'm ready to take on the challenging issues that we face here in Brooklyn Park, become the voice in the face of the conversations that we need to have, that we not having, that we need to begin to have to unite our community here in Brooklyn Park to give us all a pathway forward together as one united Brooklyn Park. Formerly Vice President for the Human Rights Commission here, where I served with Terry Parks, who currently sit on the City Council, and during that time, we managed to do some great things here in our city, to change some things that were deserving and in need while we was here in the city. I also was with the Brooklyn Park Lions, from smelt fries to kids and cops, to kids and cops, soccer games, to a lot of things out in the community that I participated over for the many years. I'm thankful for this opportunity to be here and ready to step up to lend my voice to serve you, your family, and this city.
Thank you. And from the East Side, we have Lisa Jacobson.
I want to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce for holding this event. I want to first say that I am a wife, a mom, a stepmom, and now a mimi, or grandma. I am also a friend and a volunteer in this community. I've served Brooklyn Park in a variety of ways for the past 32 years. I've lived here both as a homeowner and first as a renter. I currently serve on the City Council for the past four years, and in four years' time, I've missed one meeting, I was in the hospital, so I do take this job very seriously. I also serve on the Economic Development Authority, and I'm currently the council liaison to the Human Rights Commission. My past here is as a volunteer on various civic groups. I'm currently a rotarian, a lion, co-chair of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I volunteered in the schools. I've been on the Planning Commission, the Recreation and Parks Commission. My background is in nonprofits, specifically in fundraising, and so when our community found a need to build a homeless youth shelter, I was called upon to help lead that effort and raise the money, and I'm happy to say that we were able to get that done, and that that project is serving our homeless youth in our area for the past several years. I am my resident's voice at the table, and I hope to continue to do that for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Benjamin Oseminum.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for organizing this event. My name is Benjamin Oseminum, and I've been a resident of Brooklyn Park since 1988, first as a renter, like Lisa, now a homeowner since 1992. I'm a registered civil engineer by profession with an MBA and a master's in infrastructure, engineering, and management. I've worked in various capacities as a volunteer, reaching out to the homeless group through the caring and sharing hands in Minneapolis, and during today, in a volunteer organization. I've served as, I've worked also in various community groups, many of which we'll not get into right now because of time, but the key ones is like, currently serving as the Board of Trustees for the St. Anthony's Catholic Church, which engages in community events, and also past president of Association of Nigerian Engineers in Minnesota. And I'm employed with Minnesota Department of Transportation for over 30 years now. And during all this time, I was involved in learning, working with cities and counties, learning how to produce a balanced budget, a surplus budget, and property tax reduction, and also being able to create an affordable housing that will serve the interests of all in our district.
Thank you. Our next question, our first responder will be Ms. Pa. What are the most critical issues facing the city of Brooklyn Park over the next several years, and what policies will you support or initiate, if elected, to address these challenges?
Well, my belief is that representation begins with listening, and what I've heard from our residents loud and clear is that the things that are most important to them and that are critical issues right now is our public safety and policing, and then also with COVID-19, our public health and economic recovery. So those are the two things that I would most be looking at to address. First with public safety and policing, and I don't, we're going to talk about police reform, and I don't mean defunding the police department. What I really mean is that we're going to look at what works well with our police department and police services, what needs to change and what needs to improve. And then, we're going to talk with our residents and work with them on how do they reimagine the police department and the future of that for our city. We have talked about public health workers going out with our police officers when it is related to domestic issues or mental health issues. And then we talk about COVID-19 and the public health. Sorry, my time is up.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Light the lights.
Turn your mic on.
Similar to Susan, what I've heard on the doors and on social media is that law enforcement and public safety is the biggest concern. On one hand, there's many in our community who do not trust the police. On the other hand, residents have seen an increase in crimes such as shootings and robberies, and residents want to know that the police have a plan to address that. And these are not two separate issues. The police and the community need to cooperate to keep the city safe, and that cooperation is lacking without trust. Trust can come through local reform, state reform, federal reform of many systems. The council can act on a few of these things alone, such as culture and policies of our local department, but we'll need to advocate with state and federal legislators, as there's resources and policy changes we need from them. There are many other important topics, development and redevelopment of both our vacant land in the north and existing properties in the south. There's a critical issue with the city budget as the COVID economy works through property taxes, and all of this will need to be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison. Not quite. Look for that red light to pop up.
What I believe is one of our most critical issues is the disengagement of our diverse community, as well as the conversations that need to be shared to give us a pathway forward together as one united Brooklyn Park. The comments, concerns, and of the community, as I'm listening to and hearing, we're just so disconnected from the living and true realities that we live with. Ninety-plus percent of the people that come to our community come here for our diversity here in our community, yet the members out in our community of the same population doesn't feel engaged, welcomed, and/or invited to be a part of this fabric of this particular community. Once we begin to heal the fragmented and broken community that we have in our community of Brooklyn Park, then we can begin to address more issues more readily, beginning with policing. As I put out a blueprint for transforming and reforming the police, I'm not for defunding the police either, but COVID-19 is one of the challenges that we must face with much readiness because it's something that's hit our particular community pretty much hard as being in Brooklyn Park. So we just need to keep a mindful eye of how we will deal with that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. I believe we first must come together, we need to learn about one another, and face these critical issues head-on. I could have answered this question differently a few months ago, but now because of the pandemic that we find ourselves in, it is time that we look at our city budget with a different eye. I believe we must cut out things that are just nice to do and focus on the things that we must do. With the COVID economy, there are so many unknowns ahead of us. We must watch the finances and balance that with the needs of our residents. We do have many, many issues around public safety, trusting the police, but also an increase in gun violence and our community policing, while it is strong in our community, we must continue to work on that. Development, redevelopment, code enforcement, we definitely must get better at enforcing the codes that we have. I also believe we need to have housing for all seasons of life, and opportunities for improvement exist, such as within mental health, which is the area I work on every day.
Thank you. Mr. Oseminum.
Thank you very much. The first item I have is...
That's okay.
The first item I have is excessive property tax in our city, and that I will address through eliminating waste and creating, generating revenue through creativity and innovation. The second is affordable housing, which I intend to address through my 4D expanded program, channeled like what we have in Ramsey County, to create an affordable housing for all, especially for our elderly-retired residents, blue-collar workers, and low-income. And the third is creating a unified residence, our community, united under love, love of God and love of one another, which we need in every policy to really impact change in, lasting change in Brooklyn Park. The third is creating a safety, a police reform, that, you know, channeled towards my zero incident and crime, which encourages us to hire from Brooklyn Park, and city liability through police incident, you know, by requiring my practice insurance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Momanyi.
Yeah, thank you so much. The first thing, if I'm elected, I will work with the City Council and the city of Brooklyn Park and other stakeholders to issue a moratorium on rental eviction and mortgage for closer because our people lost jobs and they are not able to pay those rents and mortgages. Number two, I will work with the other stakeholders through the city of Brooklyn Park and the city council to see public safety, which is not a one-stop sobbing. It needs mitigation, and it's a long process. It's been a long, you know, problem in the community, so we cannot say that, you know, we can solve it at one time. So I will make sure that we will inform every stakeholder and interested stakeholders to come to the conclusion on how we can cleanse public safety, at the same time unemployment. Thank you.
Our next question, our city is made up of many races and cultures. What unique qualities will you bring to city government that can bring these diverse groups together? First responder is Mr. Erickson.
Two years ago in the summer, I was at a pre-primary forum where we were sitting at tables and talking to residents. The residents could ask candidates questions. After the event, a couple folks from one table came up to me, and they said, "We appreciate that you let us finish asking our questions before you started answering them." I think that's how we bring diverse groups together. We listen more than we speak. We hear the whole concern that is shared by our neighbor. We don't assume that we know what a community needs until they've had the chance to tell us. When there's people missing from the conversation, we go out and find them. When people tell us what they need, we believe them. Even if another group in the community tells us that what they need is the exact opposite, we hear them all, and we try to discern the greatest good. That's how we bring this diverse community together.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
I bring life-learned lessons, lived and experienced as a person of color. I bring a tried, tested, and proven diverse perspective to the absent, disconnected conversations at City Hall about facing and discussing our living and true realities that we face here in Brooklyn Park. The conversations regard us how difficult, challenging, or the odds and adversity that one may face, sensitive or delicate they may be. These are conversations that need to have here in our community to develop and shape a pathway forward for us all to move together as one united Brooklyn Park. I bring those life-learned lessons and experience, also a careful listener to our particular residents to ensure that what we are listening to and what we are acting upon is truly reflective of the diverse population of people that we have sitting at the table that would make them feel welcome, invited, and included in the fabric of Brooklyn Park, something that I'm ready to take on as the next city council member in the city of Brooklyn Park, Central District. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. I've spent the last 32 years working with and on behalf of our diverse community, so I'm not going to focus on what I will bring, but what I have done and will continue to do if reelected. I helped to identify needs and gaps in our diverse community. I reach out, or people reach out to me, and I help them. I connect people, I connect groups, I connect needs. Recently, after the murder of George Floyd, I connected with a large group within our community of very diverse backgrounds. Fast forward, on Saturday, we launched the reawakening of the Brooklyn Park Community Foundation, where we will work with our diverse community to continue to listen, invite in unique ways, and engage, and really become the united community that we say we are. I don't just show up for the pictures, I show up to get the job done for our diverse community. Thank you.
Mr. Oseminum.
Thank you very much.
Mike.
I have been involved in several diversity committees, but what unique talent that I bring to Brooklyn Park to build a diverse community is unification under love, love of God and love of one another. Second is building strategic partnership with different people at different levels. I have done that at Mindot, and I've done that in my community, and I intend to continue to do that, to promote policies, allow us to look at the leadership of the city and the staff, to make sure that that's a reflection of the community that they serve. Also, enacting policies that will encourage all, nobody left behind, in moving Brooklyn Park forward, and that entails unification under love, love of God and love of one another. Thank you.
Mr. Momanyi.
Yeah, thank you very much. As a community outreach specialist and identification navigator for the last 17 years, I know the challenges that are facing our community. What I'll do, the first day if I'm elected, I will hold meetings, town hall meetings, I will have collaborations with various stakeholders, organizations, and the community leaders, so that we can go straight to challenges that affect our community. And this is none other than encouraging individual-level intervention and the group-level interventions. How does it come? You call the community, you make appointment, you go there, where they are, you give your speech, you talk about what you want to serve them, and then you invite them to come to town hall. That's where you can exchange ideas, and then at the end of the day, you will find out that everybody is included. Our community has got so many challenges that it can be solved by themselves alone, but when they are not involved, when they are not invited, there's no way we can get a solution. So my experience speaks volumes. I will hit the road learning the first day I'm elected. Thank you.
And Ms. Pa.
Well, I think what I bring to City Hall and as a council member is that I make sure that we always create space, safe space, for the community to come together from diverse backgrounds, different experiences, different thoughts and ideas, to come together and really just work together. I always believed that we come up with best ideas and solutions. When we do have people who have many different thoughts and ideas and very diverse backgrounds that are working together, we come up with solutions that work for all of us. I think creating safe spaces, one. Two is meeting people where they're at. A lot of our communities don't come to City Hall. We have to go out to them, we have to go to their communities, their events, and that's how we build trust, that's how we make sure that we're representing their best interests. The other thing is, I truly believe that our residents have to be included in the decisions that we make, and that we always should represent their voice.
Thank you. Next question, do you support recent efforts to identify alternative locations for the Botino Light Rail Transit Project? Why or why not? Our first responder is Mr. Morrison. Just turned himself. There we go.
Thank you. I will support alternative efforts of the Botino Light Rail if and only the majority of taxpayers choose as though this is what they want in our city. It's apparent to me that this question should have been asked in research prior to the status that we are now, because we haven't broken ground on this undeveloped project yet. Did many researchers, exhausted many hours into this project, and yet we now looking for new locations? I think this should have been considered prior to where we are now, so the taxpayer and people can have a perspective of where we moving forward. Many man-hours have been exhausted with this Light Rail project, and yet we haven't broken ground again. So if the taxpayer and community feel as though this is something that we need in our community, I will support it. If they decide that it's not something that they want, then I won't support it.
Thank you.
Taxpayer and residents here in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. This project was voted on before I got on the council, and we have spent a great deal of time, talent, and resources on this project, which has virtually been stalled out because of the railroad. There continue to be many unknowns on the LRT. What we do know is that if the LRT is funded, it will start at Target Field and it will end in Brooklyn Park. If they change those two parts, they must start over and apply to the federal government again. As I see it right now, the Brooklyn Park route will remain virtually unchanged by the proposals that they are making. But I agree with Mr. Morrison. I believe that at this point, because so much time has gone on, we must maybe take another vote and see if this project is something that we can move forward with. It's going to be a while either way, and I am concerned about transportation for our residents in the meantime. Thank you.
Mr. Oseminum.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I got it this time. I'm in support of looking for an alternative, and the reason is because the previous line that was proposed involved eminent domain purchase, and that is right-of-way, which will lead to disintegration of communities and acquiring properties, which will affect the federal requirement on... the federal requirement on environmental justice. Now, having said that, the project must be an integrated transportation system, sustainable by itself. What do I mean by that? It wouldn't be competing with other routes, thereby reducing ridership. Now, and also, it must create access to areas within our Brooklyn Park that needs transportation, and with those in place, okay, we will be able to move forward, and I will support it. And again, not just me, but the community that we serve, working together.
Thank you. Mr. Mamanji?
Yeah, first thing, for any project to start, there is always a speed study which is done. Unless I see another speed study that is moving that project from what it was, I am not supporting any moving from the initial, you know, right rail. The reason why is sometimes some of us, we are new and we have not known exactly how it has affected the people of Brooklyn Park. My assumption is it is, you know, helping the businesses and the people who are working in downtown from the north suburbs, and those ones who are working from the downtown or the southbound in the northern part. To me, as I said, at now, I don't think I will support any movement, but I will support it to stay the way it is, because I have to see another speed study, why they want to move it to whatever place. Thank you.
Ms. Pa?
So four years on the city council, I have talked about light rail quite a bit. Honestly, I'm kind of sick of talking about light rail, because I was hoping that we would already be in a phase where we are moving forward with light rail. Yes, I do support it. In conversations with our community, with our residents, there has been many people for light rail and against light rail. But at the end of the day, it's an equity issue, and that's what we often talk about. Both sides, whether you're for or against, you know affordable transportation is an equity issue. And so I think that we have a consensus that affordable transportation is a necessity for the people here in Brooklyn Park, because it gives us affordable options to be able to access employment, so we don't have barriers to getting a job. It gives access to education, to healthcare, and to basic needs, right? So that's what we talk about when we talk about affordable transportation, and this light rail would be an affordable transportation for our city.
Thank you. And Mr. Erickson?
I do support efforts to develop an amended route to the Blue Line Extension. I would say that that is a cautious yes and not a blanket yes. I am a big proponent of mass transit, and so definitely looking at the project through that lens, I think having light rail access in Brooklyn Park provides the city with a competitive advantage both for residents and for business. I think it should be augmented with east-west bus corridors to connect all residents to light rail. I don't think the light rail would be sufficient on its own. Every time I've used light rail or subway service in another city, I find it makes the city less intimidating as a tourist to explore and visit new neighborhoods. I hope that with some creativity and some investment, that Brooklyn Park could become one of those places that people want to visit when they're in the Twin Cities. Thank you.
Question. How should Brooklyn Park address the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and prepare for other potential future emergencies? Our first responder is Ms. Jacobson this time.
Thank you. I believe we must continue to address the pandemic as the serious issue that it is, especially here in Brooklyn Park. When it first began, I asked city staff to create a page on our website that consistently was updated with resources, with places for testing, where a one-stop shop for our residents to get information. When the numbers came out to the public, I want the community to know that we on the council did not get those numbers ahead of time, but we quickly began to work towards helping the numbers. The CARES Act dollars are helping residents, helping businesses, helping our seniors, helping our youth. One project in that is our new mobile health unit that will help us now and in the future. It will also be a permanent site that today was actually announced by the governor and our mayor. A new saliva testing site will go into the former TJ Maxx location here in Brooklyn Park for testing and eventually for our vaccine. Thank you.
Mr. Osemanam?
Thank you very much. This is an issue that I've been talking about since 2010. When I ran in 2010, one of the things that I proposed was the creation of public-private emergency response team that would create a plan for the city that would be revisited, maybe quarterly or semiannually, to improve it in readiness for things like COVID-19. At the time, I didn't know about COVID-19, but here we are with COVID-19. And I continue to implement and not wait for things to happen before I start doing something, but continue to push for that public-private partnership, to create a plan for the city, a plan that would be revisited and be an avenue to build a community that is well-informed and engaged in every action we take in the city. So my COVID-19 policy is creating a plan and having the talents on board to build the type of partnership we need with various equations, and also, at the same time, creating things that we don't need, like hospitals and things like that, that we could channel our people when we need be. And that is what I intend to do, and that's what I've been advocating since 2010. And with me, that will be done.
Mr. Mamanji?
Yeah, thank you so much. As an executive director of Global Health Services, I can tell you, the city of Brooklyn Park will continue to collaborate and partner with various organizations and agencies, communities, churches, which are in the front line fighting the COVID-19. All that it needs is to make the sources available and empower these existing agencies, because they come from the diverse community and they represent their communities, because there are so many challenges, like, you know, language, translations, and various disparities that the city of Brooklyn Park cannot address itself. It will involve all these stakeholders, and if they make resources available, I can tell you through my outreach experience and ad intervention in this field, it will get to the bottom of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Pa?
Well, since COVID-19 and this pandemic, we've been working nonstop to address the issues that have come up, public health, safety, the businesses that are struggling in our city. And one of the biggest things is making sure that the residents in our city and the businesses in our city has the critical resources that they need. That has been a top priority, and that will continue to be my top priority. We've been working with our police department, our fire department, and agencies in our community to make sure that we're getting information out to our community, out to our businesses, and that we are partners with our businesses to ensure the health and safety of their guests, of their patrons. One thing that we will continue to do that is one of my top priorities would be to continue to support our economic recovery, and also to continue to support to make sure that our residents stay safe.
Mr. Erickson?
I think as a suburban municipality, Brooklyn Park has done well, following the guidelines provided by the federal state government around best practices and shared resources, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. The city's provided regular communication about resources, including economic supports, testing opportunities, and disseminating information from the state and CDC in a timely manner. There's certainly room to improve that communication and that response. For example, I was concerned by the size of some public gatherings that were held in park facilities in my local park. There were very few best practices observed and considerable crowds in these spaces. So there remain many variables to be examined. I think we've learned a lot about pandemic response in the last months and are still learning, and I hope it is many years before there's a next time, but this time is far from over. So we should continue examining the consequences of the response and ways to make our response more effective going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. I have initiated an initiative called Emergency Responders Plus Team. These emergency responders from east, west, and central district would be trained in readiness in the event that any crisis may manifest in our city of Brooklyn Park. We want to make sure that we have people on standby and ready to step up, to lend a helping hand to any crisis that we may face and endure in the city of Brooklyn Park. They will be trained to help with police and/or fire and emergency responders in those particular situations, where we may have 1,000 residents from each one of the districts that's capable, ready, trained, and prepared to deal with any pandemic or any other crisis situation that we may have that's facing us in our community. In the midst of those challenges that we will face right now, I just want to take pause to say we lost over 200-some thousand Americans. And for that, that gives us reason to begin to do some things critically to make sure and to ensure the safety and welfare of everybody here in our city and in America. So this initiative to Emergency Responders Plus would be one of those added benefits for our particular city.
Thank you. Local businesses are taxpayers but often not voting residents. Where'd it go? Lost it. In what ways will you reach out to best understand their needs and provide for fair representation in city council decision-making? Please share your thoughts. We're going to start with Mr. Osemanam.
Well, local businesses, whether they are tax, whether they are residents or not, they pay taxes. So as a councilman, I will always seek to inform and engage the community that I serve, and that includes the small businesses, finding out about the licenses that they need and, you know, tax incentive that we currently provide to the investors, and making it available to them so that they can thrive, and making sure that any project or any action that we take that would think about the community we serve, and that includes small businesses. That means not enacting projects in areas that will affect them, especially in this critical COVID-19 era. The other thing is, as a community, again, we are unified under love, and with love of God and love of one another. Every policy we enact, which includes the small businesses, will pull everybody along in love, and that is the only way we can move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Mamanji?
Yeah, thank you very much. First thing, I would like to sit with them through holding town hall meetings to know why they are not voting. They are taxpayers, they need to participate. And then, I think that we need civic engagement. They need to know their rights, they need to know why they should vote, they need to know that when you are voting, your issues are represented. Unless you vote, there is no way your issues are represented. And maybe they don't vote because they don't see the reason why. I will make sure that they know the reason why they should vote, because sitting there does not sort of, or does not make any difference. So my role as a council member if I'm elected, I will involve them wherever they are, I go where they are, or invite them to come to the town hall, where we will discuss, exchange ideas, and I will be very ready to understand their problems and present their views, and encourage them going forward that the only way that your issues can be solved is only by voting the right person in the council. Thank you.
Ms. Pa?
Local businesses may not be able to vote, but they most certainly are an important part of our community. And I have regular conversations and meetings with the businesses in our city to talk about what are barriers for them, what can we do as a city to support them, and how can we help them to thrive? Because when small businesses or businesses in general do well in our city, it means our whole city does well and does better. I've been a small business owner myself for many, many years, so I understand the struggles of being a business owner and operating a business. I understand there are barriers. I understand that there are things that we do specifically need in order to thrive and be successful. So I bring that to the table. I support small businesses, and I will always continue to support businesses in our city. A few things that Brooklyn Park does right now is we have our Business Forward Commission, we have our Brooklyn Park Development Corporation, we have business loans, and we have staff that will help you start a business here, grow a business here, and build a business here.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
In many ways, the needs of businesses and voting residents are similar. We all want clean water and a functioning sewer system, snow-free streets, and responsive fire service and law enforcement. In that way, what's good for the residents is good for the business community. Further, business and residents need each other. Residents need jobs, goods, and services, and businesses need customers and a workforce. As taxpayers, the businesses are our constituents. We have a responsibility to consider their needs fairly and on balance with the needs of the community. I'm certainly open to reaching out to them and them reaching out to me. I expect businesses to challenge the city to become more business-friendly, and I expect residents and leaders to challenge businesses to be good community residents.
Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Morrison?
I have a planned initiative ready to be enacted called Businesses Uniting Together for a Better Brooklyn Park. These businesses will proactively be involved in engagement and promotion and exposure to our particular city. It will also open up and create doors for new opportunities for our youth in our community with employment and volunteer training to get them volunteer hours, to get them proactively involved in our community, partnering with businesses to ensure that we are reaching out, looking out, giving back to those within our community by employing them and also providing some volunteer training to help keep them off the streets, involved in some positive structure. This Businesses Uniting Together for a Better Brooklyn Park is an initiative, once again, that will create opportunity to engage our youth and also provide strengthening opportunities and more business opportunities and growth for our own business here. And I will also conduct monthly meetings with business owners to listen to their needs and concerns that they have here to help them grow their business within our community.
And Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. As a small business owner in Brooklyn Park myself, I understand the needs. During the pandemic, I spent a lot of time checking in on businesses in my district to find out what they needed, how they were doing. After that, I made a motion to waive 25% of the fees that they were expected to pay because they were dealing with cash flow issues. They were closed for 25% of the year, and we felt it only fair to do that. I also served as council liaison on the Business Forward Advisory Board for three years with various business owners in the community. Through that, we did an innovative project where we are waiving our sack-and-wack fees, that's our sewer and water access charges, for businesses that come here. Other communities charge thousands and thousands of dollars for that. I've also worked through Liba, which is our Liberian Business Association, and to get them some exposure. And just today, CCX did a story that is intended to help them gain that exposure for the Liberian businesses. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the questions that we received via email leading up to tonight's forum. You will have 45 seconds to solve the world's problems. Enjoy. Okay. Just to give a heads up, this is where I jump around on you, so pay attention. All right. First question in 45 seconds. Last year's Brooklyn Park entertained a very large and significant development project called Project Hot Dish in the North Business Park Center, but the project was withdrawn by developer due to perceived hostility by the community to develop this area. What type of development do you support for this sector of the city that borders Champlin, and how will you sell future development in this area to the citizens of Brooklyn Park? First responder is Mr. Mamanji.
I didn't hear the question clearly.
It's really long. Okay. This was about Project Hot Dish up in the North Business Park Center, but it was withdrawn due to perceived hostility by the community. How will you, what type of development do you support for this sector that borders the city of Champlin, and how will you sell future development in this area?
Well, I really don't know whether I have the right answer, but what I will do, number one, I would like to know from the residents, the reason why they don't want that project. Because when people dissent something, there must be a reason why they are doing that. So as a council member, I will go sit down with them- So as a council member, I would go sit down with them, go through the question and answer, and to know exactly why do they dissent not having that project being done there? And as I said, I really don't understand the logistic or the behind it, so I can't say conclusively that this is the way I could do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're going to jump to Mr. Erickson. Mike?
The neighborhood right there where Operation Hot Dish was to have been built was the first neighborhood that I visited this year. The residents there know that that land will be developed, they know that it's not going to be a farm forever. Many of their concerns were around just the size and scope of the projects. They were interested in smaller, more flexible projects that felt more manageable to them. And I think that that seemed like a reasonable request. The Operation Hot Dish was going to be a significant-sized operation, and I definitely empathize with their concerns. But that land will be developed, and I think part of the job of the council is to discern what fits best there.
Ms. Jacobson?
When Project Hot Dish came up, I was the council liaison to the Planning Commission, where that project stalled out, but I attended the five hours of that meeting and listened to the residents and others speak. I support positive businesses that adhere to our codes, that will bring good to our community, that comes in a variety of ways, that comes through jobs, that comes through being a strong community partner. The businesses, I believe, that will fit best in that community aren't necessarily what's best for our neighboring communities, but what's best for our community. And, you know, I'm excited to see what projects might come to be in that space, and I am hopeful that the neighborhood will find positive reaction to it and that we will have a much smaller or shorter meeting around it. Thank you.
Ms. Pa?
Well, I would support high-quality development. I would say best use, highest value. Ideally, I would love to have restaurants and retail shops, but I know that that may be unlikely. But I would say the development that can create livable wages, livable wage jobs and create a volume of jobs so that our residents here have employment opportunities that are local and nearby. But, you know, any commercial development that is highest and best use will contribute to our tax base and lessen the tax burden on our residents. And that's what I look at when I look at commercial development here.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. I have proactively been involved with talking to business owners here in the community that's looking to do some further investments in our particular community. One thing that we need to make sure is that how do we intercept traffic that's traveling through Brooklyn Park to travel to someplace else? So we need to think about the things that they're traveling through Brooklyn Park to, to go to, to buy and purchase. So I would agree with Susan Pa, we need some retail services and restaurants in those particular areas that will create jobs for our residents here in Brooklyn Park, that will create an avenue for people to travel, to have to use Brooklyn Park as a destination to come here to shop, to dine, or those type of things. Well, we need to intercept all the traffic that's flowing through Brooklyn Park, traveling to even small-town Champlin, to Albertville, and other places that will provide us a destination place for them to come here to Brooklyn Park. So I'm with Susan Pa as well.
And Mr. Osemanam?
Yes, this is actually a bigger problem than, that the city is facing. Because you see, a program or a venture that was approved without the engagement and informed community behind it, and that is why it's not done. And that's not the only place that that is happening right now. We first must create a way to have an informed community and engaged community so that whatever project we approve will not be just how we feel, but what the community needs and what will improve their life and cut down their tax base.
Thank you. Our next question, do you support the city's 2021 preliminary budget and the proposed 2.88% increase it contains? Why or why not? First responder is Ms. Pa.
Well, I'm in the council right now, and although I would say my hope is that we can still make some strides in cutting the, our budget, and so that we don't have to do a 2.88% increase in taxes, it is very hard because we, anytime you're trying to balance a budget between what you have as dollars you could work with and then the services that, that our residents want. They, our residents want us to maintain services but to cut the budget, and there are rising costs that we cannot control. There are rising costs in insurances, in salaries, and those are things that we have, still continue to have to work with.
Thank you. Mr. Momanyi?
Yeah. At this time, when we have this COVID-19 effect, I would never support any increase in budget. Although paying taxes is very essential to our programs and other essential services, but you can see, and you can agree with me, this is not the right time to increase in taxes to the people who are suffering, because some people are out of work, they are not able to, you know, bring food to the table. Some of them, you know, they don't even afford their medical or whatever bills. So I will not support any tax increment at all because of this situation that we have of the COVID-19 effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
I, I sympathize with, with Henry as well as Sue, both of them, because I don't want to raise taxes either. We have seniors who's on fixed income, middle-class families also feeling the pension, we still have families that are still struggling to survive, just trying to find their way out. During this COVID-19, it causes us to revisit a lot of things that we're doing today, and also I'm not readily to say yes to raise taxes. However, there is a need to raise taxes on raises and healthcare insurance, those things continue to go up even in the midst of COVID-19. So we have to meet the demands of our city staff to ensure that they have what they're needing, that we providing them with the benefits that we need to get to the services that we expect from our particular staff as well, so.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
I attended the city council meeting where the, where that budget was proposed and discussed, and I think that the 2.8% increase was the city's best attempt to be moderate and, and reasonable, and it seems as though our city runs a pretty lean budget as it is. Looking at what, at what cuts were proposed to meet those goals, there, it seemed to be just several thousand dollars at a time, buckthorn mitigation or reducing the number of sidewalks that are plowed. And so I feel like the city runs a pretty lean operation as it is, and we do need to provide for our city staff's benefits and, and union negotiated salary increases, et cetera, so.
Thank you. Mr. Osemanam?
I totally oppose any property tax increase. I was at the same budget meeting that Kristen mentioned and Erickson mentioned, and what was proposed during that meeting, for lack of what is really a sham. The city has so many opportunities to go back and eliminate so many wastes. Since the city has been in, for quite so many years now, it has been property tax, property tax increase. We need to rediscover creativity and innovation in revenue generation in the city, and use that to reduce property tax. There are things we can do, you know, with city liability that will create revenue to reduce property tax, and that is what I intend to do.
Thank you.
I am totally opposed to property tax increase.
Ms. Jacobson?
Well, I voted to approve that budget increase at the time. That is our starting point, and from there, our staff and the council work to get to a better number. For me, right now, what I continue to talk about to the city manager and at the council is that it's time during the pandemic and all of the unknowns that are ahead of us, that we need to look closely at the things that we don't need to do but the things that are nice to do. Our residents are looking for us to balance their needs and their increasing needs in public safety, for example, and in code enforcement. Last night, we had a 5.85% increase from the League of Minnesota Cities just in our insurance. Those are the things that we cannot control, and those infect us in the budget. So I will push for a 0% increase.
Thank you.
As long as everyone is taken care of. Thank you.
Our next question, where Mr. Morrison will be starting us off. What is your vision for Highway 252? Please provide your perspective on whether you want it to be a full freeway with no traffic signals, or if you would prefer it to be more of a highway with traffic signals and a more green space.
Thank you. I'm one man with one vote. I would like to defer my answer to the taxpayer and residents on what they feel as though. Whether or not I want it to have traffic lights or no traffic lights will be a full freeway, it's not up to Boyd Morrison, it's up to the taxpayer and residents that feel as though how they want their city to operate. So I would lend my voice to what the taxpayer and people want in our particular community. If we want a full-fledged freeway, then I would support that. If they don't want it, they want traffic lights, I would support that as well. But I'm listening to the community to see what it is that they want. I'm just one man with one vote, not vote, and or voice, just trying to make it happen for the people.
Thank you.
Not for Boyd Morrison.
Thank you, Ms. Pa.
So yes, Highway 252, it's been an ongoing conversation. And what I've heard from the community is that they want it to be a freeway, no traffic signals. If, especially the people who live on the east side, because if you've ever sat in that traffic, you'll want a freeway with no traffic signals. So, you know, even though I'm on the west side, I do not travel on Highway 252 as often as the people who live in that area. I do once in a while, and I have also seen that traffic. And so when I go back to representation begins with listening and doing what your residents are asking you to do, that's where I land, and I agree with Mr. Boyd that yes, if our residents want it, that's what we should push for.
Mr. Osemanam?
Thank you. As a Mindot employee, okay, again, with my background, I defer again to the community, but in a different way. Advising them on what I know about freeways and access to freeways and that they need, if any, for a stop light at that location. See, the community that is not well-informed and engaged does not know really what implication of some of the things that they ask. And as a civil engineer, I will give my, lend my advice as to what is actually needed and let the community decide on what they want, and whatever they want, I will back.
Ms. Jacobson?
I have served as the council liaison to the 252 Task Force led by Commissioner Mike Opat. At the table is Mindot, is FEMA, the Met Council, and the other cities that surround the project. I attended many open houses, both in our city and in Brooklyn Center, listened to the residents in my district. And it is, what I've heard is that people do want this project done. They don't necessarily want some of the elements that have been brought forward, such as the, what they call the Seine Lane. But I believe that this is an important regional piece of the network, and others from Anoka County, from Maple Grove, would travel this freeway to get downtown in a much quicker fashion. And so I, as the voice of the people, would push to have this freeway completed.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
I certainly agree with the others up here that the community will and should decide what happens with 252. As a resident who did use 252 every day to go to work until my employer told me to stay in my basement, I would personally love to see it turned into a reduced-access freeway for several reasons. One is traffic, two is just the large number of traffic accidents that I saw on a regular basis on that road driving to and from work. And thirdly, the increased traffic through Brooklyn Park to support our commerce here. Thank you.
And Mr. Momanyi?
Yeah, like the last of, the case I've said, like, you know, the people are the taxpayers. What I'll do, I will involve them in town hall meetings and then see what are their findings, what are they suggesting? Because we cannot do something, we cannot impose something on the taxpayers. Whatever they will agree on, then that's what I will support. Residents are very important, and we are working for them, they are the taxpayers. So I cannot suggest that, you know, I go against their wishes. So I will support what they will, you know, come out with, what they will support, this is what I will support. Thank you.
Okay. Trying to decide between transportation or environment. Actually, I like this one. What ideas or proposals do you have for intra-city transportation, especially for the seniors of this community? First responder will be Mr. Erickson.
I've talked to a few folks about this. When I lived in the Chicago metro area, there was a suburb called Miles, and they contracted with the Regional Transit Authority to provide a circulator bus that stopped at several senior residences, nursing homes, apartment complexes, and then had stops at key commercial areas. And I found that to be well-used and well-received, and I think that our, our community would support and benefit from such a thing. So I think it's a fantastic idea.
Mr. Morrison?
I would add to Mr. Erickson this. If this is used as a mode of transportation to our seniors, then we should also consider just a bus service without a light rail. What's the difference? Provide the bus service to get around our city, not just saying we're going to restrict this or move this from our seniors. I think that's a good idea to give them mobility around our city, but then we also should consider just putting in bus transit in our city as well, as opposed to a light rail. We can achieve the same outcome by using bus services in our city, and it'd be less costly as well.
Ms. Pa?
Well, our residents definitely deserve more transportation options and more affordable transportation options. I would say increase bus routes, especially east and west bus routes, preferably light rail. And, you know, I'll just tell a story. My mother-in-law, before she passed away, she was a user of the bus transportation to get to where she needed to go. She was older, didn't want to drive anymore, and that was her means of getting places to visit, socialize, go to the store. We could have taken her, but she's an independent woman, she doesn't want me taking her places. She wants to go when she wants to go, however way she wants to go. And so bus transportation is very critical. East and west is what we're missing right now.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
I believe that transportation is a critical missing piece in our community. I think that it's time that we also begin to look at some innovative ideas. North Hennepin Community College, I know, has recently been talking to Lyft about a partnership to get their students to their campus. Could we do that as a community? Could we partner with Lyft? I know a Lyft driver who actually ends up just driving around this city, driving kids to school and seniors to appointments. We could provide more jobs for our residents by becoming more Lyft drivers, and I think it might be a great partnership. But I agree, we need an east-west bus route, we need it now, we needed it yesterday, and that comes through the Metropolitan Council. So I think it's time, it's past time, and we need to fix our transportation issues in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Momanyi?
Yeah, I also agree with the last because transportation is very important, is key to any development, and especially when it touches to our seniors, it is very important and critical that it must be increased. And, you know, there is nothing that can move without transportation. Transportation is very essential to economic development, even maybe getting to appointments to our seniors, you know? It is very critical. So to decrease it, it will be a benefit to the residents of Brooklyn Park, and I will support it 100%. Thank you.
And Mr. Osemanam?
Yes, well, this is a bigger problem again. You know, we are creating program, program and tax- You know, we are creating program, program, and taxing our residents more and more rather than reducing their property tax. We have various transportation systems, metro mobility and the bus system and the rail, proposed rail. But what is lacking is an integrated transportation system channeled towards building access to the areas that is needed. And I'm the only candidate that is proposing that we partner with Metro Transit to make that happen. And with me in place, we will eliminate this tax on their spend, but rather create something with what we have that will serve the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our final question. We will go in the reverse order in which we started. So in summary, how do you intend to best serve this city and move it forward? So representing the east side, we have Benjamin Oseminum.
Thank you very much, and thank you for conducting this forum. As your city councilman, I will work to engage the community and have a well-informed community that, and talk the talk with them by creating an innovative revenue generation that will reduce property tax, create an affordable housing program targeted like the 4D expanded, 4D expanded program like what they have in Ramsey County, that will create affordable housing for all and provide assistance to our elderly, low-collar workers and low-income. Make our streets safe for our children through my Complete Street Program, police reform, enact my 200 crime and police incident to protect good cops and eliminate bad ones.
Thank you. And also representing the east district, we have Lisa Jacobson.
Thank you. I will serve Brooklyn Park as I have for the past four years on the council and the past 32 years as an engaged resident. My record speaks for itself. I listen to you, I show up when you call. I'm here at the table being your voice. I have no agenda. I guarantee I'm not up here for personal gain or to build my resume. I'm here for you, for your families, for, for the residents in this community, and I hope to earn your vote to be up here again. Thank you.
From the central district, Mr. Boyd Morrison.
It's my mission, plan, and purpose to become the most visible face, the most careful listener, the most credible voice, and a direct gateway to our state and federal legislators for our first-in-line resources that would improve upon and sustain our city's economic development and our growth for years and years to come. Elected me as your city council representative, I will become again a voice and face of the conversations that we need to have that we're not having in our community in the absence of our current elected administration right now and their voiceless conversations that we're not having. We need to begin to have these conversations that's central, essential to us and our community to give us a pathway forward together as one united Brooklyn Park. I'm standing strong for you, the people, because I care and because you matter. Boyd Morrison, November the 3rd. Please, thank you.
And also from the central district, Mr. Christian Erickson.
I think an important question that should be asked of every candidate running for office is, do you know what the job is? Look at candidates' platforms and decide, is this a promise that a candidate can reasonably keep? Are the proposals allowed under state or federal statute? I've invested in building relationships with city staff, other council members, our state legislators, and other community leaders. I've invested energy in understanding the job of a city council member. I think the primary job, or the way that the city council member's job boils down, is fundamentally one of relationships. No council member has any power as an individual other than the power of our ideas and our relationships. We're each one of seven. The city is further subject to rules that are set by the county, metro area, state, and federal law. The city is also subject to you, the resident. How do I intend to serve the city and move it forward? The simple answer is relationships and ideas. Thank you.
And from the west district, we have Susan Pa.
Thank you. I'm honored to serve the residents and our city the last four years. I consider it a privilege to be able to represent the people in my district and of the city. Moving forward, I intend to work hard, as I have the last four years, in making sure that our residents come first, that their voices and the things that are important to them, their priorities, are also my priorities. Making sure that those critical issues and challenges that we are facing now and that we will face upcoming, that we address those issues and that we find solutions that are really going to be in the best interest of the people here and our city. I just want to say thank you to everyone for listening and for paying attention to the candidates that are available to you to vote for. And please, just go out and vote.
And finally, for the west district, we have Mr. Henry Momanyi.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you once again for this opportunity. On my side, I am not new in the community. I have served in various capacities in the African immigrant community, refugees and the people of color. Coming to the city, I will bring all that experience that I have. I will rely on collaborations and partnerships from various community stakeholders to address the challenges that are facing our city of Brooklyn Park. I am not going to be the answer, but you will be the answer to your own questions. My job and my role is to put you together and we have a dialogue in inclusivity in any situation, in any problem that we are facing the city of Brooklyn Park. So I ask you kindly, if you can vote for me, then I will be there for you in November as your city council member from the west district. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I think Brooklyn Park has great people wanting to represent you. I would also like to thank the voters for viewing and participating by submitting excellent questions, and I would also really like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters and our shared mission to provide nonpartisan forums for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. Remember that if we could not get to your question tonight, or if you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Please remember to get out and vote on or before November 3rd, as in this situation, your vote truly counts. Thank you. Have a good evening and stay safe.